It's okay, it's okay to talk, you just be aware that the mic's on.
They did. End of business today.
Hey, we're live.
My granddaughter said what she wants to come hang out with me this week, so.
Well, I said go live.
The board needs us.
You ready, Bob? All right, here we go. We're gonna get started in our committee meeting and I'm gonna go ahead and just let the mayor, you wanna go ahead and speak right away for us? Yeah, good evening. This is new for all of us, just like so many things are over the last five, six days. It seems like three months. I know how it feels to you, but that's the way it feels to me. And it's coming at us fast and it requires, I think, some pretty quick responses. In all of our lives, in so many ways. But as it relates to this particular city and specifically these council meetings, we are obviously in a new format. We are live streaming the meeting. So as we begin, and I'll speak briefly as to why the livestream. But first, for anyone who's watching or participating, you can access us, and you already have if you're watching, through the City of New Franklin Facebook page. Consistent with city council meeting rules, any individual wishing to address council shall state their name and address prior to starting their comment or question. This procedure applies to both public comment and public questions and answers segments of the meeting. So as you can see, we're gonna try to continue. The agenda is out there and the intention is to continue on that agenda and to continue, as New Franklin always has, to give residents not one of the two opportunities, to address council and talk about what's on your mind. In this case, because those comments will have to be typed, comments or questions, they can be typed into the comments section on Facebook while the video is streaming, but please limit the comments, questions to three or four sentences. Obviously, it gets unwieldy if somebody puts two paragraphs on there. When they come in and at the appropriate times, when it's time for public comment and then later in the meeting when the opportunity is for questions and answers, we had Katie Smith over here, our special projects coordinator, who we put her in place just in time and she's been invaluable and done a fabulous job for us. One of her jobs was crisis management and she walked in the door to this. So she's really done a fabulous job for us. She'll receive those, she'll share those with President David Stock and then he will, between the two of them, they'll leave the question or the comment at the appropriate time and that's how we'll proceed. Why we're doing this, a couple of things. The Open Meetings Act in Ohio requires participation by the public, that it be open to the public. If we cannot have this meeting and council can't take action without compliance with the Open Meetings Act. And so on one hand, we have that statute. On the other hand, from the Ohio Department of Health, there was an order issued that relating to all matters related to preservation of life and health of people to address mass gatherings and to limit mass gatherings. And that order urged Ohioans to stay home and avoid unnecessary contact with one another. And so the question became, how could we have a public meeting? How could we tell you to come to this public meeting? And when we're saying you can't go to school, you can't go to the restaurant, and how could you safely come here? You can't go to the polls, how could you safely come here? And yet if we don't have some access to you, if you don't have some access to the meeting, council can't take action. So the Ohio Attorney General, and we're not the only municipality who's wrestling with this. So the Ohio Attorney General issued an advisory on March 13th, that would be Friday, as quickly as things are happening. We didn't know until then that there had to be some balance between these two requirements, the Meetings Act and then the Public Health Order. And he indicated two things, that public access to the business, to Ohio's public bodies is still vital, although the Ohio Meetings Act doesn't specifically dictate how a meeting is made open to the public. A meeting could be made open to the public by livestreaming through internet or the television. And so therefore, we have the opinion from the Ohio Attorney General that livestream is an appropriate way to involve the public in the meeting so that we can go forward and still be in compliance with the Ohio Meetings Act. That's the summary of a law on that as of today. We will intend to do this at least through the May 6th, at least until the May 6th meeting. Yesterday, we issued a declaration of state of emergency. Based on the fact that the life and safety of residents of the City of New Franklin may be at risk due to respiratory disease identified as COVID-19, highly contagious, can be spread by individuals without observable symptoms. You know the rest of the story. The governor declared state of emergency on March 9th. County Executive by name Shapiro declared a public health emergency on Friday, March 13th. And to avail ourselves and coordinate as best we can with local, county, state, and federal agencies, it's in our interest to also issue a declaration of state of emergency as virtually every other city in Summit County has done. The declaration requires that relief efforts be coordinated through Summit County Emergency Operations Center, the Office of the Governor of the State of Ohio, the Ohio Department of Health, the United States Center for Disease Control, and the Summit County Health Department to assure maximum resources and benefits to the citizens of New Franklin. I will tell you that it has been a daily, there's been daily contact. We've had numerous conference calls with local, county, and state health officials, the governor's office. Today, I was on a conference call with 950 other mayors and representatives from around the country, from the White House. Mike Pence was on that conference call along with the Director of FEMA and the directors of a number of the other federal agencies to update from the federal end, you know, what the response is around the country. So I want everybody to be as comfortable as you can and we are as plugged in as we possibly can be. The, from the city's standpoint, we have had, well, we met Friday, we're gonna get Monday. We're gonna meet Monday, Wednesday, and Friday as a staff to coordinate our response. Every day's something new and you can be proud of the response of each and every individual who works here in the city. There are conference calls twice a week with Summit County, I mean Shapiro's office, Donna Skoda from Summit County Public Health. They're legal people. And all the mayors from Summit County and the trustees from the townships and the mayors from the villages. Those are taking place on Tuesdays and Friday mornings. So there's plenty of information being exchanged and there's a protocol being developed for something that there was no protocol for before. We have an emergency action plan, the city does. It was designed primarily more for the natural disasters than in the pandemic, but it still works and we're working it as effectively as we possibly can. Consistent in pursuant to the declaration of state of emergency and consistent with what's going on around the county, we did issue directives. They are posted on the website. We're encouraging you to check daily our city Facebook page and the other Facebook pages around the city that dispense the information. But we'll be going directly to our city Facebook page and there'll be updates at least daily as things develop relative to the crisis. All public meetings, with the exception of council, planning and zoning and Board of Zoning Appeals are canceled at least until April 20th. That's an arbitrary date. If that's the first Monday, that's 30 days out. And so I think the notion is that we see where we are at that point. I think it's important to note that these directives, they don't expire on April 20th. They go at least until April 20th. And I'm sure that we, you know, we don't necessarily have to renew them, but we'll probably extend them. Even without extending them, they extend until the crisis is over. Declaration of the state of emergency shall take effect immediately and remain in full force and effect until such time as the emergency no longer exists and shall be terminated by executive order when no longer required for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. So basically, these, until we modify or remove, they will be in place until the state of emergency is also removed. The, you see what we're doing with the council meetings, livestreaming those. We will assume they will stay close to the public at least until May 6th. That would be through our next two meetings in April. Public access to planning and zoning and BCA will be by livestream. Agendas will be limited to urgent matters. And, you know, life goes on and commerce goes on. If we have somebody who has a commercial project, we certainly want to advance that. They need to be here to get approvals. Those are the kind of things I think that would go to the front. If we have somebody that wants to build a shed and their neighbors are fighting about it, you might have to wait another month or so before we ask people to come in here to testify. And that's a whole nother issue, but we're addressing that one separately. All events at the Tudor House are canceled at least through April 20th and we've offered full refunds to anybody who has events there. All city sports fields will be closed to the sports leagues and the public at least through April 20th. I modified that today and I'll speak to that. And I'm sorry to be so long-winded, I'll try to cover as much as I can and we'll sort the mayor's report. It came up, you know, you got a call, it wasn't because of this call, but we started talking, you know, there's, the Health Department's also saying, you know, everybody's home and people have cabin fever. We don't want you gathering in groups. So clearly, the baseball leagues are not gonna start. The baseball and softball leagues, that's not gonna happen at least until April 20th. I think what we'll do is try to follow the lead of the schools. I think if it reaches a point where the governor says the kids can go back to school, they can probably start playing baseball together. If the governor says it's not safe for the kids to be at school, I don't know how we could say it would be safe for 30 of them to gather on the baseball field together. So that's my mindset in that regard. But having said that, we got people who are stuck in their houses and they're being encouraged by the Health Department to get out, get some fresh air, get some exercise. Don't co-mingle. But at least the people that you're in the house with, go outside, okay? Well, what if we want to go to the ball field and throw the ball around, okay? We want, we don't want a foreclosed act. So consistent with the latest directive from the Center for Disease Control that is recommending that you don't gather in groups of more than five for these types of activities, we modified the directive on city parks because we recognize a need for fresh air and exercise during these days of limited options and in recognition of the federal guidelines to limit gatherings to no more than five persons. The previous directive is hereby modified as follows. Number one, the city parks and sports fields remain closed to leagues, teams, and other organized group events. Number two, groups of five or less are permitted to utilize and enjoy the parks and sports fields. If a field is in use by such a group, any other group must wait for the previous group to leave the area before proceeding. We continue to seek a proper balance between safety, common sense, and community needs during this crisis. We are always open to questions, ideas, and suggestions to further to manage these goals. So that's the latest relative to the parks. And finally, all city buildings are closed to the public. The signs have been posted. There's information there as to how people can reach us. We understand that people are gonna need to come into the building for some limited things. Somebody needs a tow release, for instance. Somebody needs to pick up a report that, you know, where we can scan and send, we're gonna do that. But where there's legitimate need to come in the building, that would have to be pre-arranged with a phone call. Phone numbers are all out there. Same thing with zoning. If somebody needs to drop something off or pick something up, they'll pre-arrange that visit with a phone call and we'll have access that way. But otherwise, all of the public buildings on this campus and at the road department and service garage are closed to the public subject to further notice. Let me close this extended open with this. It has been difficult to find the balance on this stuff. I don't know how you're doing with it, I don't know how you're doing with it. You know, one minute I'm thinking it's overkill, the next minute I'm thinking maybe it's not enough. And that's a dangerous place to be, in my opinion. Because that might lead me to say, oh, as a general rule, I can't do this, but what does one time hurt? Okay? Well, you know, I don't know the answer to that one sufficiently to say that one time's okay. My feeling on this is we are all in or we're not there at all. And the rules have to be the rules and there's a reason for them and I defer to people that are smarter than me when it comes to this. I just wanted, if that reaffirmed for me, well, a couple of ways. You know, the suggestion is we're 10 or 11 days behind. Italy, we know on Sunday, within 24 hours, 350 people died over there. And the story over there is they're deciding who gets to live and who gets to die because they don't have enough ventilators to take care of people. The state's chief public health director, late last week, said that more than 100,000 Ohioans are infected with the coronavirus. Now, that is a projection based on data from other pandemics and mapping the, you know, the spread of it and now that it's reached this continent. So the suggestion is it could be as many as 100,000 Ohioans infected. They went on to say that without the state action, and we may find that we were really, really fortunate to live in Ohio because we had a really proactive governor. And I'm not, I'm not here to stump for Mike to line, but I've interacted with him on a couple of things and this guy cares about the people. And he was, as you know, one of the very first in the country to close the schools. And because he heard that, you know, he got the message and he took action. Without state action, the estimate was that nearly a million new infections would have occurred in Ohio within 30 days. Now, the numbers they say are this, for 80% of the people infected, the worst you have are mild cold symptoms and you recover within 10 days. For 20% of those infected, you need hospital care. If in fact, the 1 million number was right and 200,000 of those people needed hospital care, only the very sickest of the sick would be admitted if it made that path through Ohio, as it has in other countries, there would be more than 14 patients for every hospital bed. So these are sobering facts and they're not meant to spread fear. But what they're intended to, this is serious business. And I think we all know that at this point. And so I can tell you that we are committed to doing our part in that regard and doing everything that we can to curb the spread, including our maiden voyage on livestream. So hopefully this comes across well. And I apologize for being so long-winded, but I wanted to get as much information to you as I could. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, all right, we'll go ahead and get started in our committee meetings. We have three first readings, a second, third, or pending, and we have a supplemental agenda with one first reading. So we'll go ahead and start with finance, Jim.
We opened a finance committee meeting at 6:18 with all members present. First one is Resolution 20-R-15, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the dispatch fund and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This is our usual transfer of funds. Amount of $50,000 from the general fund to dispatch fund. Unless there are questions, we'll ask to wave the three on this. Next one is Resolution 20-R-16, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Sunlight Financial for Life, Voluntary Life, and Voluntary Vision Insurance for New Franklin's self-insurance plan and declaring that this resolution be effective immediately upon passage. This is renewal, we've worked with Sunlight Financial for a number of years. Any comment from the bar side of the room?
The price remains the same as last year.
Okay, any questions concerning this? Again, this is something that we've done. How many years have we been with them, do you know off the top of your head?
Uh, for four, I think.
For four years, yeah. So we'll ask to wave the three on this. And I'm done. That's all I have, right?
Yep.
All right, we'll close the finance committee meeting at 6:19.
All right, we'll open the committee development at 6:19. Resolution 20-R-17, a resolution establishing part-time positions code enforcement inspectors. Claiming this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This is much like we did last year. Mark, is that right?
It will actually be, we used Bill Young after Mark had retired.
Oh, that's true.
It's the same idea, but it would make, we did it last year as a seasonal. So there were limits to how long that person can stay. It's presented to you now as a part-time position because we think we're gonna have that need on an ongoing basis. The resolution talks about anywhere from eight to 24 hours a week. At $16 per hour, that's the same price we paid last year. The, Barry has indicated to me that he would likely need this person one day a week on Fridays through May 1st. And then the busier season, May 7th through November 13th, it would be two days a week. And Barry takes, he, Barry uses his vacation by taking Fridays rather than taking weeks at a time and that works good for us too. So it would fill Barry's vacations, two days a week. Hey, I will tell you, who knows? He may not be needed two days a week. You know, it may just be Fridays to the whole year, but there's no anticipation now that it would be more than two days a week, but just to have a buffer out for a day in there to make it eight to 24. Now, we're gonna have to advertise for this position, this can be a part-time position. So I know this is the first time you've seen it and I know there's a sensitivity, particularly with livestream, to make sure we don't rush things through, but if we could get this one moving, it would probably be helpful. If you need one more reading, then, you know, that's fine too.
Is Bill Young in your process of that or?
Yeah, I fully expect he's gonna apply.
This worked out pretty well for us last year.
It did.
I'm on the fence, if you guys wanna read it.
I'm actually fine with waving the three on this because we will be posting the position and people will have the opportunity to read the position and apply for it or ask questions about it. And we're getting into that busy season, so we need to move forward to get somebody in position for it. So for me, I'd be comfortable waving the three on this.
I would too, because Bill did a great job. Like you said, I think he probably will apply, whether he gets it or not, I don't know, but I think he did a terrific job. He was good with the citizens.
All right, any other questions on that one? We will go to wave the three. We have supplemental 20-R-18, a resolution authorizing the city to purchase an ADA three-station restroom trailer from Ready to Go Restroom Trailers, LLC. We're claiming that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. This price seems a little bit higher than?
I can maybe save you a little bit of time on this.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it is, it is. We had looked at a unit, another three unit, and it was saying $36,000. We've been looking at this for months in anticipation of trying to upgrade the restroom situation over at Tudor House and which we need to do. At this point in time, if somebody goes in there with a wedding for 225 people, they're gonna spend $3,500 between the house and the tent. And then to expect them to come in their wedding gowns and go and do a port-a-pipe. So, you know, at one time, we thought maybe we'd be able to move a little more quickly on a pavilion. I think that's gonna go a little slower. And so the decision from the Tudor House, and it was supported by the Parks Commission, was to, let's get a unit. We looked at, we decided we'd get a unit and we looked at metal prices on these, whatever we paid to get something comparable to this. And it came up to about $3,800 a month. And we keep this for up to eight months. And so we did the math on that and we're maybe $30,000 in the season. So now it makes, would say makes sense to buy. This one is a little nicer than the other one. And from this company, they do not have the automatic, the guaranteed buyback, but we're not really worried about that because there's such a market for these that you can't find them. They come, you know, when's available, it's gone. So, you know, if we, if we eventually decide to make this investment, I think it's a safe investment. I think it's certainly much more economical than renting the unit for a year. But let me cut to the chase. This is how fast things go. We didn't have this in time to get it to the end of last week. Thursday, I saw, I'm saying, man, let's get this thing going. So I put this together and you're getting it late. In the intervening 48 hours, you know, business hours, all of a sudden, I don't know how many weddings we're gonna have at Tudor House this year. And this is the very best time to make this type of investment. So, yeah, thoughts on that?
I agree totally. And also, it might be a time that you could pick up one that would be second-hand or slightly used at a much reasonable price, more reasonable price. I would think that would be the time to look and shop it around.
So I'm, I'll ask you to take time on this and then we'll keep shopping and keep thinking and we'll get a little better sense of where we are in two weeks. Right now, weddings are exempt from the 100, well, now it's a 50-person gathering. So to my knowledge, they have not changed that horribly. Weddings and funerals are still exempt. So as we head into wedding season, we close everything at the Tudor House, but weddings don't start till May. And we're gonna have a decision made there as well. Do we say, well, it's your wedding, if you wanna have it, it's your risk? Or do we wanna say you can't do that at the Tudor House? And that's, that's all. These are hard. You know, these aren't life or death things, but they are, I'm sure they are for the prize. But we'll cross that bridge when we come through. So if you take some time on this.
All right, wrap up community development at 6:26.
All right, thanks, Amy. Anything else, anything to discuss in their committees? All right, I'll call a word to City of New Franklin Council meeting this Wednesday, March 18th, 2020. At 6:26, please stand for the march.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America in the spirit of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes, present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Hoff?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting on March 4th, 2020.
Second.
There's a second discussion on the minutes. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd also make a motion to approve the financial.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
All right. Here we go. Call the count, will we have any comments to add?
So far nothing, but I did just hope that it's time for all of the community to watch.
You can come afterwards?
Yeah.
How about if we go when you tell us?
Something I'm ready to add.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I'm glad you called, everybody. I think you're sick. I'm terrified. I'm terrified twice. Now I'm not a bad guy. Normal. All right. Moving into our legislative, like I said, there's three first readings on our regular agenda, and a second, third, or pending, and we have a first reading on our supplemental. Let's go ahead and start with Resolution twenty dash R dash fifteen.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the dispatch fund and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on this.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Ms. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to Resolution number twenty dash R dash sixteen.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with Sunlight Financial for life, voluntary life, and voluntary vision insurance for New Franklin's self-insurance plan and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution twenty R sixteen.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution twenty R sixteen.
Second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to Resolution number twenty dash R's dash seventeen.
A resolution establishing the part-time position of code enforcement inspector and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This was assigned to community development. I knew that we waived the three.
Second.
First and second, roll call, please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
All right, that passed seven zero. Thank you. We ended up second or third, or pending. We'll move over to our first reading on our supplemental, which is Resolution number twenty dash R dash eighteen.
A resolution authorizing the city to purchase an ADA three-station restroom trailer from Ready-to-Go Restroom Trailers LLC and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This was assigned to community development. The rest is time. All right, time is requested, time is granted. All right, we'll take care of our legislation, and we're going to move on.
First of all, you can see that we are trying to observe social distancing with the placement of council here in the, in the chambers, in the mayor. We understand how important that is, and we're trying to practice what we preach. On that note, I do want to mention this, and this is from a, uh, a national health director who talks about all the things that, that need to be done. Again, not in the scare category, but it's consistent with what we talk about in terms of hospital beds, that we have about forty-five thousand staff ICU beds in the country. They could be ramped up to about ninety-five thousand, and that if this thing takes hold and takes off, they're going to be overwhelmed, and that's exactly what happened in Italy. So, this isn't about fear, it is just about why we're trying to observe some of these things and why we're urging you to do the same, and, and I think so many people are already on board, but this last thing I want to mention, and this is a recommendation from this doctor, no kid playdates, parties, sleepovers, or family friends visiting each other's houses and apartments. Even if you choose only one friend, you're creating new links, possibility for type of transmission that we're trying to prevent, takes four or five days to manifest themselves. Again, I'm not trying to sell fear or tell you how to live, but that's what the experts are saying. So, you know, we, we hope you're able to encourage that. I do also want to say that I think you're probably aware that one of the prime indicators of this is the temperature of the one-hundred-point-four, and you've seen that data, but that seems to be the magic number. It's such a magic number that our fire department already put in place a policy in the fire department that, that the fellows over there are, their temperatures taken when they arrive at work, they work twenty-four-hour shifts, it's taken again at the twelve-hour mark, and it's taken again before they leave the shift, because the estimates come back that they say before this thing runs its course, you, you most, statistically, you're going to lose twenty to thirty percent of your workforce. If we have a fireman who, you know, gets the disease, and then is, they're bumped up with three or four more, and then maybe everybody's had disease. So they're taking those temperatures as a, so we thought that was a good idea. We had our meeting today as a staff, and we said, you know, let's extend that to the police department as well, because these folks are obviously the paramedics, they're dealing with sick people. The policeman, you know, pulls up, he makes a traffic stop and gets in the window face to face with somebody he doesn't know, maybe he has to physically interact with that person, maybe he's putting handcuffs on, maybe he's doing a pat-down, who knows? We don't want the people that are being, that are interacting with the police to worry about the policeman and vice versa. So we said it'd be a good idea, let's do the same thing with the police, and we'll test them when they come in. And so we left that meeting at noon today with that intention. By two o'clock, we had gotten a call that the governor had issued another directive that all safe, not just all safety forces, all public employees will have their temperature taken at the beginning of every shift. So that's how important they think that piece of the puzzle is. Unfortunately, if you don't have a thermometer, good luck, because you're not going to find one in seven of ten. And we hope that there'll be restocking, but believe me, they're gone. And, but we have enough here, and so we'll be, we'll be testing our staff starting tomorrow, and anybody with a temperature of a hundred-point-four or greater goes home. So we're taking every precaution in that regard. I got good news here in a minute, but one other thing, I wish we could turn the camera all the way around to Robert Keath, our video guy, who made this happen today. And he had, he spent a lot of hours, he was here most of the day yesterday, he was here again last night, he was here most of the day today, and he put this together for us. And I want to give him a round of applause. And he is just, oh, that's who he is, he cares. On that note, we are, the intention is, if this is put together, we're going to move forward, and so we can put this together, assuming council thinks it's a good idea, and, and make it a permanent part of the meetings, and, and many of you have suggested that before, and, you know, necessity is a mother of invention. So we use it now because we have to, and then we'll be able to continue using it, but we'll upgrade the equipment so that, that we got it just right, and hopefully it won't be long before you're all sitting behind that table. Okay, now we're in the, I got good news and a couple things, and then another good news at the end. The first good news, we were unable to have with us tonight the Girl Scouts from Troop nine oh five eight two. And these Girl Scouts, and they're fifth graders, and they are, they have volunteered to do a sensory trail project for the city. And out here on, at the trail that we have back here, they're going to have different stations that each stop, and, and ways for people that, to interact with the, with the five senses, and they couldn't be a more delightful group. They were going to be here, I know, I talked too long, but let's put it back up again so we can see it. So they didn't get to be here, they were so excited they were going to be on TV. Their leaders are Stephanie Gomburg and Sarah Rowden. They are not in the picture, but they're doing a fabulous job with these young ladies. And so from left to right, uh, let's see, in my picture, that'd be on my right, as we're looking at it, we have Elliot Odom, Bella Dean, Emily Moore, Taden Gomburg, Ellie Campbell, Annabelle Rowden, and Brooke Baston. And they were the most delightful group. They came and met with us. We're going to get them here as soon as we can, as soon as we can open this meeting back up. They do a presentation, they'll explain one by one, they line up, and they, and they tell you what it is they're doing and what, what they're doing for each one of the senses, and it just makes me feel good all over. So I can't wait to get them up here, and, and we will. All right. Excuse me. I'll take my temperature. The community emergency response training, as you might guess, we talked about that before on March twenty-first and twenty-eighth, and that is canceled, so that's not going to happen. Like most everything else, we're trying to, all the, all the notices we get from the county, we're updating that daily on the website. There's a big, long list of what's going on in each department around this county, and it may look like the same list every day, but it isn't, because they give us a new one every day with new closures. It, it's moving at an unbelievable speed in terms of those closures. Virtually almost entire departments came shut down. The census, however, is still happening, and we got this notice that ninety-five percent of the households will see, will receive an initial invitation to respond between March twelfth and March twentieth. Let's see, today's the eighteenth, so if mine doesn't come in the next two days, I'm in the five percent. I'm curious, did anybody else get anything yet from the census? I have none.
I did.
Judy did, okay. All right, well, the rest of us are five percenters.
Sorry.
So look for those, we'll keep talking about that. I don't know that, have any reason to think that this virus has slowed that process down. Once you get those, if you follow the instructions, you can respond to those online, and so we'll keep you posted with what's going on with the census. This is an important one of this, just, I mean, this one just came in this afternoon. Soma Health is now offering free online screenings for COVID-nineteen, and they're offering free e-visits for COVID-nineteen, flu, cold, sinus infection, A fever, and allergies. This service is available twenty-four, seven. We will put, get this up on the, I didn't, believe me, it's been a firestorm, so we didn't get a chance to get this up, but we will. So I'm pretty sure if you Google SomaHealth.org, you can follow the prompts and find virtual visit, and, and this is, uh, this is being offered twenty-four, seven. I know there's a reason for this, and one of the reasons, we talked with the fire guys today, they don't want you at the emergency room. If you, if you have the symptoms, but you don't have the symptoms that are so extreme that you need hospitalized, because they're just overwhelmed. All right? So if our paramedics come and treat you, and, and they have tools for evaluating the level of symptoms, they may tell you, listen, you treat your home and call your doctor in the morning, because they've been ordered not to transport those people to the hospital because they won't be admitted when they get there. So this is a really good alternative, and we encourage you to take advantage of that. PFOS, all of a sudden, it's like, that's not quite as important, but we, we sent out, PFOS is a compound that's found in, in almost everything, including us, and we put an alert on the website about two weeks ago, because there was, there's seven different PFOS compounds, they're starting to test for these around the country, not really quick enough. DeWine again, Governor DeWine, my new best friend, I mean, he initiated this in January, and said that the EPA was going to test for this, evidence of these compounds in all the public water systems, and, and that is any well that services the facility that has more than fifteen people more than sixty days a year. So, and that's us, right here, because we do. And there's forty-five of these in, in New Franklin. So they're starting, and they started with schools and churches, and the EPA put out the bulletin, because there were, it was, the PFOS compound was found, they had action levels, and the action level that they found in the neighboring church was one-hundred-and-forty parts per trillion, and that's right at the action level, which means that it's, you know, I guess if it was one-thirty-eight, they wouldn't have done anything, but it was one-forty, so they took action, all right? And one of the other, one of the related actions they took was to test our water, which we called and said, please come. And, and I have not, I've been advised of the results, I don't have the paper results yet, so, but I'm still going to talk about it tonight, because I don't know when I'm going to see everybody again. And the results that we've been advised of is that there is not evidence of any action level PFOS in, in this well. At the particular compound that was found over there, one-hundred-and-forty parts per trillion, was somewhere less than forty parts per trillion here, so it doesn't look like there's anything actionable here. The primary reason I mentioned, when I get the, when I get the hard copy, I'll, we'll get it out to everybody, but of all the other things to be concerned about, some of the county public health, rightfully so, sent letters out to about two-hundred-and-fifty households of people that are downstream from us to say, hey, you know, this happened, and you may want to test yourself, okay? I don't think we've heard from any of those folks, but I do want to get out, and we'll do a follow-up with them, because they, they looked at the geography and the topography and, and the slope of the land, and it goes that way. All the people who live down there will tell you, because they're not always happy about getting the water that comes down off a miracle field. So I, I think, I hope that would give them a little bit of comfort, that, you know, that we don't have a problem here, so that water's running down, that, you know, very, you know, hopefully they won't have a problem either. We're still in a position, I've talked to the EPA about trying to get some funding, if any of those folks want to go through this test themselves, but nobody's contacted us yet, but please do if you've got questions about that. Okay, and I want to thank Kevin Pop. Kevin, I know you're out there, and, you know, and, and, you know, the crew that, I mean, I was dinosaur-ing along here, and we don't need a Facebook page, and you guys said, yes, we do. And many of you, you know, you and Jim's been adding about that, Andy, all of you council folks, and we said, yeah, you're, you're right, we do. Wow, how good a thing that we got. It was just, the Lord looking after us, is my feeling. So, but I, I thank Kevin, he gave us a nudge in that direction, and he also has been very helpful and resource for us relative to the PFOS and issues relative to water. He's extremely knowledgeable, and not just in water, but in infrastructure in general, broadband, and so he knows that I'm, I say nice things about him because I appreciate And so, he knows that I'm, I say nice things about him because I appreciate it. And also, you know, we're gonna try and get some volunteer time out of him to help us on some projects. So, but really, he knows so much about the PFAS and we thank you for that, Kevin, for your input on that. Extremely helpful. And lastly.
Paul.
Yes.
Also, I think the nice thing about Kevin, he shares.
Yes.
He's always coming in and saying, I mean, seriously, a lot of people don't do that.
Right.
Kevin shares.
Yep. And you know, this is, when I talk, let me say a few things about the Tudor House. First of all, the financial part, it was good news that we, for two thousand nineteen, we actually had a net profit at the Tudor House of about twelve thousand dollars in terms of what it cost for the, to keep the place open and also for the community grants that we put out there. The, from that perspective, we did incur, we spent twenty-seven thousand dollars on some capital expenditures. A long way. And these are gonna be one-time deals. We spent forty-seven hundred dollars to have the floor done. Thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the cement work in the driveway that's been needed forever. Eighty-seven hundred and forty-one dollars for the garage. That was the balance of what we didn't already have in the capital. So, there was twenty-seven thousand that was spent out of that. When you factor that through, that basically, that was the twelve thousand dollar profit and another fifteen thousand that came from the parks. But the good news is, you know, going forward, that's a real positive sign for the Tudor House. There's a lot going on over there now and this kind of gets back to the Kevin idea. Very, we, when we're getting done with volunteers is just, it's just so gratifying. The number of people, well, I'm sitting there, one right there that helped us and we, you know, I get more ideas for that second floor. But we're redoing the kitchen right now and I'll volunteer. Hey, I want to thank the Lowe's, by the way, because we bought the tile for the kitchen floor and if they knocked it down, it would have been about two thousand dollars and they took about seven hundred dollars off of that. So, we got all the tile for the floor for eleven hundred bucks or something like that. We have, we have Guy Donatelli who's gonna lay that floor for us. We have Bob, oh, forgive me, Bob. I can't remember Bob's last name all of a sudden. He did all the electrical for us. And Bob Shetler's our caretaker over there. I'm not gonna pull it out. Bob, you know I love you. He's the electrician. So, different guy. This guy's volunteering, took all the fixtures out, did all the wiring, I mean, put new fixtures in, spent all kinds of time. Nick Latacheck from Air's Insurance did the counters. Way to see him. We did all the counters. And so, you know, the volunteerism out there, it just goes on and on and it is so much appreciated. We are, I was gonna be with somebody next week, but we have a lady who's specialized in these areas and we're gonna try to expand this volunteer base. I wish I had it already up, but I didn't know the thing was coming this quick. But we're looking to put a volunteer group together so that we can reach out to all people in a variety of ways. All right, I've gone almost too long, but I got one last thing and this is my last piece of good news. I mean, this was on my desk between the time I went home quickly and then I came back and the mail was there. And this is from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Enclosed is your copy of the above-mentioned agreement to transfer state lands. This is agreement to transfer state lands from the Portislay State Park. This copy's for your record. I'll draft a journal entry, send it to the state auditor requesting the governor's deed. Once I receive the deed, I'll send it to you so you can record it. This is five acres of lakefront property right next to the Tudor House, a grant. So, wow. So, you know, I mean, things are hard right now, but life goes on and we got a lot to be thankful for. All right, sorry to whistle wrong, but that's all I hear.
Good job.
Thank you, Paul. All right.
Well, it's appropriation time, as you know. If you've been looking at your emails, you've gotten the revenue totals for a number of years and also the expense totals. We've been working on the appropriations. We would have had the draft to you already, but all the extra things that we've been doing, we still have a few more to finalize. By the end of the week, you'll have the long green sheets with all the totals on it so that you can review that and take a look at that. Depending on how things fall in line, you will have the resolution by the next meeting. But all the information that you need will be on that large green sheet anyway. So, I don't know how quickly I'll get it in a resolution form. You will have it for meeting, obviously. But it just depends on if there's any last-minute tweaks that we have to make to it. But everything that you need is on the long green form plus the explanations. If you have any questions, please give us a call. Since April first is the deadline, we get the annual appropriations in line. We will have to pass it at that meeting as well, but you will have it by the end of this week to review. Please let me know if you have any questions and we'll go from there. The only other thing we have is that the February, end of February total of unexplained balance was three million, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, or three million, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and eight seventy-seven. And that fall out.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, no, by all means.
Oh, wow, thanks. I guess this would fall under old business because we could talk about, but first of all, I wanted to say a sincere thank you for all the time and work that you've been putting in these last couple of weeks with everything that's going on, even on weekends, evenings, late night, you know, especially on Monday night when trying to figure out if the polls are open or closed or back open or back closed. But you've been putting in, obviously, most people may not realize how much time you've been putting in the last couple of weeks. And it certainly has helped the city and, you know, I assure, speak for many when we say thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Having said that.
There's some more work.
You know, yeah, I guess the concern is that, you know, with Ms. Cook talking about budgets and stuff, is how all this is going to affect our budget for next year and tax, you know, tax revenues that, the income tax that we may not be seeing as much of because not as many people working in the different businesses and things like that. And, you know, I don't know how to judge that, but obviously, something we'll need to keep in mind. And maybe, and maybe we need to look at some appropriations for this year to plan for next year.
I, you know, I mean, that's a fair concern as this crisis continues to unfold. For the first time ever, I can say, gee, I'm glad we don't have any more businesses out here. You know, and I say that tongue-in-cheek because there are cities that rely, you know, that major, major, major part of their budget is their income tax revenue and there's obviously gonna be concerns for that. So, I think, and I'm gonna speak for Susan on this, but from my perspective, you know, from the appropriation standpoint, you know, there's always been that buffer and, you know, that's why we have over three million dollars carryover. So, and, you know, sometime we talk about that rainy day fund and I don't know if these are gonna be rainy days or not. I would expect the gas tax revenue will go down. These are just my immediate thoughts. Now, the good news is, the gas tax went up. So, and to Susan's credit, it seems like your worst nightmare if you want to spend money, which is fabulous. So, when we did projections going into this year, it was always, let's, you know, let's not worry, let's not count on how much more we're gonna get. Let's talk, let's just assume we don't get any more. So, I think there's, there's a fair chance that, that we'll end up at the same level of revenue from gas tax even though it'll come from, you know, the higher percentage. There was some increase fortunately in the, in the budget this year, the governor's budget for the local government fund. So, we're gonna see some increase there regardless of what else happens. We, you know, we, we resolved on some things. We're getting a little bit more money into the road department from some compensation from the road use that we're trying to finalize, so that's gonna help. There is also the additional projected tax money from a nexus, which is right now being discussed. But it's going to be something. You know, we expected it would be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's been a request to suggest maybe there should only be two hundred thousand. And when the state first took a look at it, it would have been five hundred thousand. And the, the tax board will make a decision on that, initial decision on that late June or so and we'll find out what those numbers are. So, the short end of it is that I think it's a good time to recruit, but I'm comfortable right now that I think, I think we're gonna, you know, I don't think we're gonna see any, any major drop off, but it's a point well taken. A Grilled Parks time is up. Looks great. Swam by this afternoon and it works. Excellent. All right. I got one more old business. Because I didn't mention it, I know people are concerned. And that's Conville Road Bridge. I know David World. No, I'm bringing it up and I'll tell you why. You know, it's like, I have no idea what will happen at this point because if you remember, we were trying to get those emergency funds and at this point, we weren't nor was. All right. Maybe the application for the emergency funds. But there's gonna be a lot of hands in the till for emergency funds. And I don't know how that's gonna play out. And I'm not sure what happens if those funds are declined. My goal, my intention all along was if they said yes or they said no or it was only part of the hundred and fifty thousand, let's say, that it's gonna take to fix it, that we would then take that back to Summit County and say, hey, you guys need to help us fix Conville Road. Well, right now, Summit County's resources are gonna be stretched to the maximum. They're sending large portion, we get the news releases two or three times a day, of the people who work at Summit County are being put on administrative leave, okay, with pay. And I'm guessing they didn't have that money budgeted. And that's, that's gonna be a big number. And we don't know how long it's gonna last. So, it may not be as effective when I go to the county in July and say, hey, we need a hundred and fifty thousand for our bridge. So, I just want to be upfront about that. I don't want to not talk about it and when you ask me and Jim, I'm saying, oh, yeah, by the way. So, we're just gonna have to continue to monitor that and see what, you know, what comes from that award at the end of Jan and maybe we'll be blessed in that regard. And finally, on that one, I said I was gonna try to get the, those barricades. I didn't. We were having, we were a little short-staffed in our service department, so I expected we'll get that particularly now, a lot of what I've just told you. We'll get on that within the next seven days. And it's becoming a four-way as well? Yes, yeah, that's gonna happen. So, sorry, David. We still appreciate everything you're doing with that pool. Just wish, wish a lot of people. Thank you. All right, any new, any other old business? How about new business? All right. Do we have any questions, please?
Not yet. Only about eight seconds, but I did, I posted about five minutes ago. But they didn't, then anybody had. Oh, wait. Okay, some heavy towel. For it all, but we trusted. The video stream seemed to go well. Thanks for the effort. Also, thanks to Mr. Cox for the continued efforts with the recently started informational gathering. The PFAS HAL limit is one hundred and forty. Action is required for readings of one hundred and forty-one and up and this is why there is not action for the church. Additionally, McDonald's, high redistributing, and St. Luke's were non-detectable, which is great news. Finally, thank you for the time, Mark.
Thank you, Kevin. You have meetings somewhere at the acting?
I'm picking up. Two minutes in New Franklin videos that have been going.
Very informative.
Thanks, thanks for being on top of that.
No, I seen, I was at that meeting the other day and I seen Kevin Pollak and some other people coming to meetings in their little communities. But I didn't go in, I didn't help you.
No, I wasn't, wasn't invited. Why, why wasn't I invited?
I think so, I'll let you know if anything else.
Your executive session? No. I make a motion to adjourn?
Sorry, I think.
All right. All right, our next council meeting will be April first, starting at six with committee livestream. Anyhow, everybody, stay healthy.